I'd like to call the meeting to order. Are there any additions to the agenda? For routine administrative matters and/or pressing matters that will require ratification at a future meeting?
Nothing at this time.
Nothing at this time. We need to approve minutes of November 3rd.
I'll make the motion that we approve the minutes of the November 3rd, 2020 Select Board Meeting.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to approve minutes of November 3rd, 2020 meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes passed. Any public comment on items that are not on the agenda? You'll get three minutes per person.
Chairman Pucciano.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mitchell.
Two things. First, homeless people have no place to live. They had a campfire, which I'm sure you're aware of, last night at 11:23 at night. I mean, it's a deep hole lot. I am concerned with COVID epidemic. They had no proper shelter, you know? Nobody deserves to be on the coal. That's... The second thing is, I was reading in the Browner Forum with a Browner Public Library opposing COVID pandemic. But what we're not doing is addressing Rocky and Green Public Library. It cost us $143,000. And they've been getting a paycheck right along through this. We need to tighten their belt and come up with a plan to either take that control of that library or to try to let some people off because they're not open. So you're going over the budget, so this is no better time to do it than now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
I don't see anybody on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. Managers report.
Thank you. Talk a little bit about COVID here. As you know, we're all aware, it's a changing situation. And at the moment, as Mr. Mitchell had reported, the library is going to be closing for in-person browsing and in-person services. They will have some curbside available. And we'll try to publicize that information. At the moment, we're going to maintain our current status at City Hall. And that is, we are open to the public. We're able to socially distance. We're requesting people come and continue to, you know, follow COVID protocols, wear a mask, conduct your business, don't congregate, and leave the building. If that changes after the Thanksgiving holiday, we'll certainly let everybody know. But right now, we'd like to keep ourselves open as long as we can. We have talked about installing a night drop option. So we're looking at a spot on the side of the building here, near the elevator entrance, where we can do basically like you do at your bank or when you go and do a night drop with your keys for a car service. So people could come, drop off payments or taxes or other items that they would necessarily not want to leave untended. And then we pick them up and be able to do that without having to transact things in person. And then we do send back receipts and information back to people in the mail. So we're going to try to get that installed. So hopefully that'll help us continue with services as well. We have compromised, people with compromised immunity or other medical issues. We did authorize Google to work at home. It won't impact what they're doing to service the public. And we have a pretty good infrastructure, thanks to going through this last year, where they can continue to be productive. As of right now, everybody else is still coming in, working regular hours. And we're hoping that we can maintain that. And we will certainly see what happens after the holiday.
Okay, thank you very much. Item number one on the agenda, preliminary budget review.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and just give some sort of brief remarks about how we are looking at our overall approach to the budget. And obviously, COVID has a huge effect on that. And then Shannon's got some updates that she can give to you on specific things that we're looking at that we've already discussed. Most of this is operating budget. We're going to come back with a separate budget to discuss with you, equipment, capital, and debt service. So that will be a separate meeting. And then hopefully with input, we'll have an opportunity then to sort of finalize things after that. Two things that I think we agreed on as we approached this with department heads and all of our meetings with our department heads. First of all, we want to maintain our current service levels. There was nothing or there was nowhere where we thought it was time or appropriate to cut back on services. I think the public is still anxious or looking for the same level of service from town. And at this point, I think we can accommodate that within our current budget structure. And the second thing is, we do have unknowns. Obviously, COVID restricts the ability for us to do programming in this building. It restricts some of our ability to do some other types of activities that might impact. For example, in some ways, the strange is it does seem COVID is impacting us positively on some of our utilities because people are at home more. So we're actually processing more waste, using more water. We will get an impact and we'll have a report on the collection of taxes. We just concluded the, you know, November 10th was our deadline for the most recent tax collection. So we'll see how we're doing. We'll see if we're starting to see significant impacts from people that might have had job loss or other disruption because of the economy and how it's impacted individuals personally. And we'll certainly report back to you on how that looks going forward.
We don't have that tonight?
We don't have those finalized tonight. We're still putting together, we've got a couple stragglers that we're still trying to finalize. So we'll have that for your next meeting. And then the last thing is, again, we have some expenses. We've already incurred for COVID expenses. We've talked about the Legar grants. We've already submitted. We're, I think, cautiously optimistic that everything that we've looked at meets all the criteria and should be reimbursed back from the state. It's a little more cloudy looking forward as to what impacts it might be in the next cycle. So we're going to be conservative. We did put some monies in, talk about what potential expenses might be as we go forward. And then, you know, again, the hope is we'll have some offset. But I don't think at this point we can guarantee it. So that's sort of the broad view of how we approached it. I'll let Shannon sort of fill in some gaps, maybe on some of the more detailed conversations we had with the departments.
Thank you. So at a very high level right now, not including this tax year in which tax payments were just due last week. We have, the town has $200,000 in past due taxes for all previous years combined. And if we look at that, some of those years are actually in payment agreements that people are up to date on. So a tax sale in general costs us about $100,000 over three years. And then we wouldn't see in the first fiscal year any income from it. We would potentially see some after that. So something for you guys to think about is that with such a low balance of past due, and again, at our next meeting, we'll have a much better handle on this tax payment, given that it's only a week late, we still have people coming in to pay their tax bills, is that if we choose not to initiate a tax sale this year, we can reduce the budget by 50,000 because there is 50,000 in this budget for a tax sale without any revenue projection. One of the other items is making the Development Director full-time. And the thought process behind that is now things have changed, the environment's changed. And so Gary, as most of you know, is working for both the town and the village. And so I would like to discuss at the joint meeting at the end of December, the village picking up the difference to bring Gary on full-time or a full-time Development Director. So in this budget, there is the $22,000 that it would cost to bring him on full-time. And there isn't the revenue from the village because we haven't had that conversation with them. But hoping that we could offset this budget another $22,000 there. The other thing is there is 50,000 in COVID expenses in this budget. And I did not project any revenue because typically I don't project grant revenue unless it's guaranteed. But I do think that in this instance, we could offset the 50,000 in expenses with a revenue line for grants as we already have grants in the works this year and we'll see the revenue in FY '22. The only other significant change is the increase in recycling wages, which as we know, recycling has been a painful point for us. So we opened a third day and we're finding that as more and more people are aware of this, it's reducing the traffic on Saturdays. So we would like to keep that implementation and run three days a week going forward, which would require a $20,000 increase in personnel wages. And again, we would like to offset that too by looking at the revenue and seeing where we could increase potential revenue items compared prices to other facilities. So at a high level, those are, if we did remove the tax sale, we did supplement the Development Director with revenue from the village. And we did make an assumption for COVID grants, this budget would be flat. And then there's other options, such as we had significant savings last year. And this is just speaking to the Town General Fund, is using fund balance to help reduce this budget. We, taxpayers paid their taxes last year. We worked hard to reduce the budget and so we could use those funds. Oh, sorry. So that's what I have for the General Fund, if we want to speak to that.
Yes, Peter.
Shannon, you only got $12,000 for the EA to the manager. I thought we were combining that with the HR person. Is that the plan or?
So we... Oh, no, go ahead.
Well, yeah, we're looking at a combination of, you know, I do have a part-time opportunity. We've talked about the sharing of a position with planning and zoning, cities with the manager's position, and also with the listers because we're coming up to a revaluation and a couple other major issues that they're going to have to get some additional help with. Our five-year tax agreement with a hydro plant is also up. We're approaching the end of that five years, so we're going to have to do some work on that as we go forward as well. As you guys are all aware, that's a big payer and one of our major contributors to our tax base. So we're going to have to do some prep. So we thought that maybe between the three departments, we might be able to share a resource and share some of the burden across three different functions that way.
Yeah, I know we talked about just low salary proposal there. I've been at Town Hall, we've got operations, we've got wages and maintenance in there for 15. Bruce is no longer here. What's the plan with that? Is there...
So we are going to have to have somebody in some capacity. I could give you a laundry list of things in the last week and a half that have taken place. And, you know, we're doing the best we can, but we have nobody really overseeing the functionality of the Town Hall and other buildings. So in some capacity, we will need somebody to fill some kind of a position, whether it's wages or contractor or something. We need something in the budget for it because it doesn't need to be a full-time benefited person. But there are just things that need to be taken care of and someone who's responsible for that.
Okay. Under debt service, the sewer line extension principle went from 18.8 up to 95.5, 95.6. What's with that?
So some of the loans are structured, so they're heavy in the back end, and this is one of them.
Okay, I wasn't worried. It just looked funny because it was a big jump there.
We still have that chart you made, I think. And it made that showing that you can help.
We're also going to do a debt service specific conversation with you separately. We'll have that information, we'll show you the five-year and the 10-year.
Things would go up and then come back down.
We are seeing some things fall out, which is positive and, you know, we have...
Debt service, the 16 cents on the tax rate, that's a big chunk. I saw that. What's the excavation permit expense of 10,000? What's with that? Never seen that before. Is it with the bridge under highway? I don't know what it would do.
I think some of that is probably allocated towards the pit. We have some Act 250 expenses we have to deal with. So part of that is just offset in that line.
I thought we had already sort of squirreled away the money for the closing of the pit in previous budgets. And there's a fund for that. Am I incorrect?
We do, you're absolutely right. We do have a pit closure fund. We need excavation permits for a variety of things. One of them is something that we need to do every five years. So when we dive into highway a little more, we can have the rationale for that. But we just have upcoming things that are going to need permits.
I got this, dear. One, the, nobody's going to take the insurance incentive? There's nothing budgeted or...
Yeah. So we kind of touched on this last year. So I've never budgeted the way you guys did, which is you take an exact person and the exact amount that they spend for health or incentive, and you roll it through the budget. And it created a lot of issues for me in the last two budgeting cycles. Typically, what you do with something like a benefit item is you would make an assumption for a number for each employee and then you'd run it across. So a perfect example, and I don't mind sharing with you guys, is myself. I went from a family incentive plan, which is $13,000 a year, to a family health insurance plan. So when I budgeted for myself, I thought I was going to carry the incentive for a full year, which was $13,000. When I switched to our insurance plan, because we lost our insurance, it went to $23,000. So it's, in my opinion, a bad way to budget for this line item. What's better is to take an average, make an assumption for each employee, and run it directly across. And whether it's an incentive or a health insurance, just all goes into the same line. We're never going to be accurate, as you see in the assumptions for incentive and health. People drop health insurance, pick up the incentive, and vice versa. So this is just a better and more accurate way to forecast something like that.
Okay, no, just look funny, that's all.
You have more?
Nope.
Anything right now, early on here, after hearing what they presented?
We're not going into, we're not going into details into highway because I just see that paving is level funded. And I'm not sure if that's the right thing to do, but I guess we'll have a deeper discussion.
I did want to speak to the highway at a high level after questions were done for the General Fund.
That, you want to, you want to, Susan, you want to get ready to that discussion?
I had another question then on the... No, no, that's all right. I just wasn't, I didn't, I missed what the, sometimes they're coming in and out. I have a question about the meeting house. I know that it's due, it needs to be painted, three sides. We're behind because Bruce didn't get to it, obviously, because he was not here. So he was going to do two sides. And now, if we're going to keep on schedule, three sides really need to be done. But I don't see if that's what the maintenance line is or is that something else? I forget the number, I think it's 15.
The record. He was supposed to paint that two years ago. So it doesn't have anything to do with him not being here.
Gary has some update on that.
So...
It was on the schedule for this year, but anyhow. Right now, we're at 15. Does that include the painting that needs to be done or is that other stuff?
No, that's the painting.
Okay.
But Gary...
Gary's going to speak for a moment on this, all right?
Just for, Susan's right about the past. But what we did instead, because we weren't able to get to the painting, was we addressed the critical areas on all of the sides. So there were places where the paint was missing and there was concern about damage going deeper. So we spent, I think, something like $8,000 this year doing those repairs to, just to shore up so that there wouldn't be any damage. And there is, we're getting back untrapped with the one side per year. Shannon was referring to, it's in the budget this year.
Okay. I think that's it for right now.
Yeah, Mike, I have stated when this pandemic started, and as a manager, I mentioned a brief part earlier this evening. I think we're going to be expecting the revenue report reference to taxes, Shannon. With some concern we all had, I believe, in reference to how we would fare out last payment year due a week ago. So that's going to be interesting to see. But we still have this pandemic going on. And in some respects, it's increasing and getting worse, especially in our own state. And there are people out there, some of which I know, that are in this community that they've either, their spouse or their partner have either lost their job or had their hours reduced, or other things have changed, such as insurance or health insurance or the type of job they're doing or they're not doing. So I know you've heard me say it before, but I'm going to be conservative. I may be ultra-conservative this year because we don't know where we're going to be financially. And there's a lot of people out there that, because they speak to me, they're telling me they're, they are struggling to pay their taxes, whether it be also water or sewer. So I would hope the board, as they usually do, keep all this in mind. And we've got to take a look at it from a different standpoint. Because this is an unusual year. It's looking like it's going to go into next year. And we're not sure where the revenues are going to stand. And we still have a community of people here that we want them to stay here. We don't want them to leave or be out of their home or whatever else. So we just need to be sympathetic to that and understanding.
I am going to echo on that without going line for line here tonight. I think since March I started speaking as a board member here about the economic impact. And I think we did a good job this summer till now heeding that warning and what we did. We made adjustments. And just like Stefan just said, there's businesses that just got closed again. So their families are affected financially. Their employees are infected. These folks pay taxes. I don't think we've seen the full impact from what's happening. So I think the right thing to do is to do what most of these homeowners, businesses, taxpayers are doing is being very cautious with their spending, reducing their spending. I think this is the year we reduce taxes. I'm not sure how we got to this point where we level fund or go up 2% every year with no end in sight. So I think it's time to do what any business, any business's employee, the employee's family members have all been doing, is being very cautious in rearranging their budgets and doing more with less.
Can I...
I think we really need to look into that and come back and consider what can still happen financially to this, this community.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, but Peter had some notes there and Peter had some comments. The 16 cents, I mean, we all understand that, but that's a hell of a hit for people in this community, especially in this...
I didn't feel the need to go into detail. I'm announcing that to the folks who are preparing this budget. When I look at some things that were mentioned in public comments, some of these facilities, departments that have been closed, and possibly, we don't, we don't know when they're going to open. The folks whose businesses just got shut down Saturday night, they don't know when they're going to open. Those folks pay taxes. We don't know what's coming here.
I mean, we're into...
We're preparing to spend the same amount of money.
For, yeah, from a retail aspect, this is the time of the year that the majority of the retailers count on this holiday season to get them through the rest of the year. I know, and I don't want to get into details also, but we looked at, I saw some notes or some stuff in here on Highway. And I'm going to reiterate what my colleague has said. And it's time to be able to do more with less. Other businesses and municipalities are doing it. I know I visited several here in the last month, tightening their belts.
So can I just, can I speak to all that real quick? So the idea would be that last year, we did a great job and we expect to do the same if our situations stays the same as it is. The idea is to create a budget where we're fully functional and then, you know, cut costs as needed. So that would be all of the monies that we saved last year by all these cost-cutting efforts in the fiscal year. So it'll be in this FY '21 budget that we saved by reducing all the costs. We would take those funds from the fund balance and apply them to this budget so that we create a budget where if we can function normally, if the pandemic, if there is a vaccine, if things work, we have a budget where we can run the town and facilities at 100% if that's available. But I will reiterate, since I've been here, I haven't had a budget that's gone over. And in the event that we need to, and we are currently still running with the expectation that we understand people are going to be tight on money, we are pinching pennies, we are at the lowest amount of staff that we can be at within Town Hall. We're all doing multiple jobs and wearing multiple hats. And we will continue to do that. And then, so if we did, like I said, if we level funded this budget and then we were to take some fund balance so that we reduce the budget, the taxpayers would see the effects of our cost savings. But again, if this were to lift and things were to get back to normal, we would be able to function as normal. So that is my thought process behind this.
I respect that answer and I trust that you do that and you've been doing that. I really do. I think, I think they're not going to be back to normal by a vaccine, first of all. Some of these businesses are not going to open back up ever. That affects a chain of people financially. So I'll just ask again that we look, what we do, if we're able to operate at, as you just said, the shortest, stretched thin, like you said, but it's, but it's working. That's what a lot of people are doing. That's what a lot of businesses are doing. And I don't think, I can, I don't agree that a business who's also preparing a budget with budget, full budget in hopes that it works out, but if not, we can reduce some spending. I think they're looking at how to reduce their budget beforehand. And that was my original request.
I don't doubt, Mr. Chairman and my fellow board members, that all hands, including staff, are on deck here. But, you know, and don't take this the wrong way. I talked with a gentleman today who's in charge of the Highway Department. And they purchased two trucks that were used. And they purchased two trucks that were used. And they stated where they, the trucks came from. And I know that this community takes very good care of their equipment. But for approximately a hundred and eighty thousand, they got two trucks, the cane with the plows and everything, two six-wheelers. And I looked at these trucks, they're beautiful trucks. What I'm saying is we need, we need to start thinking differently here. We need to, to, uh, think about how we're spending. And I mean, I'd like to have a brand-new truck, but I'm not. I'm looking for a used truck. Doesn't mean it's a piece of junk, just you, you gotta find something that works, that fits your budget. That'll get you by a few years. I mean, coming to the taxpayers and asking to bond or to spend money out of reserve, I think is the wrong time right now. I'm certainly not gonna ask in the village for any more bonding. But we have to be conservative. We have to look at doing things differently. Uh, and I don't wanna pick on the Highway Department or not, but, uh, if it takes a little longer for my street to get plowed or for somebody else's, I think we can all understand that and we can accept that. Now's the time to, we can hope for the best, but we've got to plan for the worst.
Just to, just as a point that, uh, looking at your total expenses, both Highway and General Fund, it looks like there's a proposed right now the four cent decrease in taxes. So you had a hundred, a dollar, ten, ten and a half cents left here. It's probably gonna be down around seven cents this year, I'm gonna guess, maybe lower than that if we can do it. Uh, that's, that's what it looks like from, from what you got on these pages today.
What is it again? Four cents there?
You look at, you look at your total expenses, both, both down, they're down, uh, under three hundred, two hundred, a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand, there's three cents in the, in the General Fund budget and a penny off the, off the, using the current, you know, four to six thousand dollars basis, you know, spending.
I, I know it's out.
Okay, I wasn't suggesting rewriting anything. It's my, it's my statement for moving forward, uh, in, in this time, that, that we all just, you know, do more with less, like everyone else is doing. Folks who pay these taxes are, are, are struggling.
We certainly go above and beyond here, I believe, but I think maybe the, some school boards should take some heat on the way we budget for things.
We, we hope that will happen as well, at the school board, which we all know is, whatever percentage of our taxes, also has the same discussion.
Seventy percent of this school.
Seventy percent. But we're not on that board. We're on this board.
Yeah, the only thing that I noticed that sticks out too is that you got, uh, projecting a two hundred and five thousand dollar increase in property taxes, uh, on the front page here. So that kind of offset.
Well, that, uh, the recommend, recommendations, you know, for eliminating the tax sale, um, recouping the development director funds from the village and, um, estimating fifty thousand in reimbursement for COVID would essentially take that away.
We haven't even talked about anything on the Depot, uh, Street Bridge too. We gotta start thinking about that. That's, uh, hopefully up for, uh, construction in twenty-three, I believe.
Yeah. So, for now, just one more question that pertains to this budget and this discussion is, when might we know about the theater and possible lease? Cause that would, um, obviously impact this budget.
Yes, we're, we're meeting with, uh.
Seen the draft lease once.
Some of the principals tomorrow.
Great.
And we'll see where they stand. And they're also impacted by COVID as we're all well aware. And so we'll see what tomorrow's conversation brings and I'll update you as we go.
Okay.
I, I take it that my name is the chairman. The manager appears to have done his own work. Also, I think it's important that we had some understanding, at least I did, as far as what they would cover, which seems to have changed. I don't wanna go into too much detail because that was a privileged discussion.
Yep.
But I'd also like to, if, to, to trumpet the horn that, that theater is one of the, um, best, um, venues for, um, the average person in this community to, to be able to afford to get out for an evening and have some entertainment and bring the whole family and you know, provide the popcorn and the drinks and the candy too. So.
That's important to have people on both sides, everyone. And we'll, we'll get more information, but I just mentioned the impact of, of moving forward and.
Yeah, I mean, I think we obviously, right, we have two major areas that we're looking at. Our, our recycling center has some significant structural, uh, you know, financial problems. We've, we've all recognized that. We have some ideas on how we can close that gap and, and we've talked about a two-year process to bring it to a break even. And then in the second year, possibly creating it as an enterprise fund, so it has to be self-supporting. That's gonna take a little more work. I don't have all the detail on how that can be accomplished. We're working on some of those numbers, but I don't think it's out of the realm of, of, uh, reality that we can do that. But again, I think that's also value for your taxpayer and, and, you know, we gotta balance all of those factors, you know, um, as we go forward. So I, I appreciate some of your feedback on that. And we're sensitive to the same issues that you guys are bringing to our attention as well.
Thank you.
So, you know, I think we can, we can move on for now unless anyone has anything else. We appreciate, uh, getting us that information and starting early. That gives us time to work it out. Okay, Susan, Hammond? Any questions? Good?
Yep, all set.
Hammond, Pucci, I don't know.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Don't want to beat a dead horse, but I'm in sense that everybody that tightened the belt, oh, we have a full staff of fourteen part-timers. The Rockingham Free Public Library, they're getting full benefits. You need to take a serious look at, we're still months into our calendar year, that's four hundred and forty-three thousand dollars of taxpayer money that should have been, that should have been addressed a year ago. It wasn't. And it's like a sacred cow. Nobody wants to touch. I'm again saying, people, part-timers, they can do better for a lot less, or we should take it over. Thank you.
Mr. Mitchell, that's a separate topic. We heard you the first time. We appreciate your statements and, and we didn't discuss any of that tonight. And, and when that comes in front of this board, you, you could have your public comment to the issue. But we heard you and we, we appreciate your, your statements.
Thank you. I like your haircut.
Thank you very much. Cut it myself.
Mr. Chairman, we have one more public comment. Um, someone said with plowing sidewalks, they need to be cleared for emergency. We have seniors, kids who walk to school. Last year, my street sidewalk left, was left for days.
Is that, um, is there a north and a south side to the sidewalk? Is it typical, they, you only do one side during the winter? Do you, do you have more details on that? But I think there's a, there's a route and they stick pretty well to that route in clearing the snow, but I'm, I'm probably not qualified to answer, but I wonder if it's, um, I, I don't have the.
I can follow up with them too and, and connect them with Andy.
Yes, I do know that they, it is a priority, uh, of the Highway crew to get sidewalks, uh, saved.
Yep.
All times of the day and night. Okay, moving on to item two, Depot Street Bridge discussion.
Wait, uh, Gattana, before we move on to, uh, item two, can I, we just get a, again, an, an update on the, the timeframe? Are we gonna meet, have meetings with the individual, um, department heads like we've done in the past, or is it gonna be done differently? Or what's the timeframe we're looking at for the budget?
Well, we still have to do another presentation to you of those major, uh, expense areas that we talked about with capital debt and equipment. We can certainly bring the library into that discussion as well. I think at that point, we'll have formulated pretty good understanding of where we are in the budget. Then we're into the nitty-gritty. At that point, if you wanna talk about individual programs or individual types of targeted, uh, activity, I'd probably bring some folks in if we wanna talk about some things specifically at that point.
Does that, uh, answer your question, Susan, for time?
Done at these select board meetings, not on a Saturday like in the past?
I would guess we may have to have some Saturday meetings depending on how fast we're moving forward, moving on, you know?
Right.
I'm not sure.
And we can certainly discuss if like Thursday nights work better or whatever works best for the select board as a group. We, we're flexible.
Okay.
Okay, ready to move on now? Sorry about that too. I didn't hear you. Okay, we're gonna move on to number two now. Uh, Depot Street Bridge discussion.
Thanks. Um, just as a, a point of sort of, I'll give you a, a, a general overview. We've got three bridge projects in general that our friends at Vermont DOT are, are working on. And, um, the first one is, is, um, and you've had meetings about all of these, so, you know, it shouldn't come as a surprise to anybody. You know, we've got Bridge Number Thirty-Eight, which is basically the Route Five Bridge over the Green Mountain Railroad. That one's in, in discussion. Um, that one's gonna have some impacts with detouring and the fact that they're using this new accelerated bridge construction process. Um, and, and at this point, they're still sticking to a complete closure, which, um, I don't know if we necessarily want that to happen. I think we can still try to see if we can find ways to maybe work around that so we have some traffic in one, uh, you know, one lane of traffic, if that's even possible still. But, um, we'll bring that information to you. We're still in conversation with them about that as well. Depot Street Bridge, um, you did sign back in March, um, just a, you know, a maintenance agreement and a memo, you know, sort of a memorandum of understanding with DOT about how this, this bridge is gonna work going forward. The issue's there for us. We have some preliminary plans. We don't have a full schedule yet. Um, I'll be talking to the engineer about when that might be available so we can look at when they're gonna get to, uh, one hundred percent and be, and be ready for bids. They couldn't really give me that information. They're also being impacted by COVID, so they're being a little conservative. I still think there, there is, they're programming this for, for, uh, final activities in twenty-two and letting and construction in twenty-three, but that schedule's all up in the air as well. But as that gets closer, we'll certainly let you know. Uh, we have some concerns there about some impact on some of our underground utilities and also some impacts on construction that might be ongoing at the garage project as well. There might be some overlapping, uh, concerns there. So we're gonna make sure those parties are all informed so we don't get in each other's way as we go forward. Um, so we'll, we'll keep you in, uh, in the loop. We also have a five percent cost share. And as we get into the capital portion, Shannon and I will update you on, on, uh, that's currently not in our budget program, but will be in the future as we go forward. As we get better numbers from them, we'll have to also then figure out how we want to approach that as well. And then the third bridge is, um, New Hampshire DOT, they did get in touch with me this week. They have a set of plans for the, uh, Bielus Street Bridge and they were going to send me some information. Um, so I will get a set of plans, which is good news. We'll see what they've got, um, at this point with their, with their current plans and then we can bring those forward and have a conversation.
What?
It's.
Did you repeat that?
They, uh, they have a set of plans that they're going to be sending me.
Reference to which bridge?
Yeah, on the Bielus Bridge.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I, I.
I came out of nowhere.
I was gonna say, that came out of nowhere.
So while I get it, I'll share it with you. I haven't seen it. I, I, the person that called me from New, New Hampshire DOT, somebody I'd never heard from and heard about, so.
So the rumor that they're tearing it down and moving the wastewater is hopefully done in that plan.
So far, that's not anything.
There's a new one I heard from.
That's a good one.
Someone all qualified.
I did too. And I understand that they were looking at the real expense of going all the way down by.
West Monroe Street.
Yeah. Or coming.
That's, okay.
So we'll see what they bring to us. So like I said, there's some activity going on there. It's very early in that process. You know, that's out in the later years of the transportation plan.
Interesting.
And, um, we'll have to engage in that more deeply once we get those plans and we'll share them with everyone and have conversations. And maybe then we can, you know, at least see where, where the thinking is right now. I don't think, you know, at this point, it's too early to speculate on to how that might impact other projects or other ideas or, or just access in general, so.
Good to see some movement there.
I was pleasantly surprised at that myself. So, and we have somebody now that we can work through, which is always helpful. Once you have a point in contact, it sort of makes that process easier. So we will let you know as we go forward where, where we stand on some of these things. So just wanted to give you just sort of a brief overview. Bridges are always disruptive, no matter how you do it and when you do it. Might, tend to create disruptions in people's routines and people's lives. And, you know, we try to do the best we can with that and give people as much advance warning. Try to come up with the least impactful ways that these things are gonna, you know, impact our downtown, impact people's commuting, impact people's, you know, ability to get to and from places they wanna go. So at the end of the day, no matter what we do, it still is, it's still an impact. You know, it's always difficult. So we give people as much warning as we can. Try to be as accommodating as we can and certainly if we can, you know, make some changes so that we can somehow minimize some of the pain on our end, we're certainly gonna continue to push to do that. So just wanted to give you that update this evening.
Are you, uh, are you still on, we still on target for the ice bridge work?
Yeah.
That's gonna be another pain in the neck.
That's another one I'm still waiting to get a point of contact for. So I'll let you know.
When you do, I think we left with like, they were gonna do a traffic study with a concern of emergency vehicles and right-hand turns when they close the north lane would be confusing and discussing traffic lights. And I did notice, I don't know if you know, or perhaps it's part of their plan, but they put a pole with cameras up and people have asked me.
Spoke to our Vermont, uh, about this going on. Those are traffic cameras. They don't have tubes. They're there to, to count direction of travel and, and vehicles.
For cars.
For cars. They are not being used for registrations or for license plate reading.
Is it part of the traffic study for the bridge or just?
It's just in general. It will be used for the bridge, but it's a gen, it's just in general. So it's opposed to putting tubes down.
So people had asked me, and you said they're not running license plates.
Correct. I asked that specifically.
But they are capable of that, correct?
With modification, any camera, with modification, any camera can do license plate and registration scanning.
Modification might be just push of a button. But it's Vermont AOT, right, isn't it?
It's Vermont.
That was Vermont.
They're also at the Hensdale Bridge, Bradham Road Bridge, Springfield Bridge, Charlestown Bridge.
You'll also be seeing some new signs in the general area. I don't know if you guys, they put up stakes and they're gonna be putting up new sixty-by-forty-eight signs that are talking about COVID restrictions. So that'll be something that you'll probably see in the next week or so as well.
I figured someone must have got some ideas how to spend the eighty-eight million they had, gold that they were, they were talking about earlier.
I think they were gonna help businesses with that money, is my understanding. But, uh, anyway, so I just, as I get updates on these things, I'll bring them to you and we'll try to bring them to the public because they do impact everyone and it's, information is, you know, beneficial.
And I, I appreciate your mentioning the full closure of Bridge Thirty-Eight as in the discussion. I don't think, I don't think you were here. It was a pretty hot topic with emergency services, folks who live just on the other side and what the state of Ramapo claim is a fourteen-mile detour is actually thirty-five to forty minutes for, for these folks.
The detour that looks like they were proposing was, uh, pretty long and arduous to me. Didn't, didn't look very reasonable. So I think we have some arguments to be made there.
Okay, great.
Didn't we, Mr. Chairman, Peter, didn't we have?
She, she came back, but.
Yeah, a topic on the other bridge, but both of us two at one point here.
Which, uh, Bridge Street?
Yeah.
Was there something we discussed earlier?
Well, we did, but that's got, we're just wondering if we did Depot Street and it all came up with a whole discussion together. But I think Bridge Street, uh, the Bridge Street Bridge is on the schedule somewhere around ten years' hours.
Okay.
It's way out.
Okay.
I think it's not.
We don't have to worry about that right, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they do a ten-year look and they throw things on there and that.
Yeah, I just want to get surprised and I just.
When they get into the five-year transportation planning window, that's when we start getting serious, cause that's when they start programming real money.
Right.
And that's when you get into, you know, the real nitty-gritty. So right now, that's not in.
Okay. Thank you for the update. Any questions, Susan? Comments?
Nope, all set. Thanks.
So then, uh, review agenda items for the next meeting of December first, coming right up. So we probably have budget discussion.
Yes, as we talked about, we'll put on the equipment, capital and debt service. And if you'd like, we can have the library. If you wanna do that as a conversation, we can do it as a separate conversation in the future. I'll leave that up to you, how you want us to approach that.
Financials, that, that, financials are coming out that week or the weekend following?
Financials will come out that week. Financials will come out that week.
Anyone have any response to Scott's library suggestion? What do we want to do with that? Wait till they're prepared to come? What we discussed?
I've not sat down with the director and had a conversation.
Yeah, I don't know.
Let's, let's.
If you want to save that for a separate meeting in the future, if that makes some sense to do that, I just wanted to give you the option. So it's up to the board if you'd like to accelerate.
Those to me.
I know Woodstock had done something with their, with the library, but that was some years ago. It's changed the way.
Let's just, let's just stick to that. Well, Susan, do you have something? You're kind of freezing up, it looks like.
I know, I was just going to say, I, I think we should wait. I mean, has their board even met to discuss their budget? I mean, we have to let that process happen too. So I think we wait on the library until they're ready and we're ready.
Okay. Whatever that financial budget, anything else right now?
If you're just under other business, this is sort of a general announcement for the community. Don was telling me that at Leslie's Tavern, they are offering people a free Thanksgiving meal. If folks would contact them directly and, and they left a phone number for that, it's 802-275-7809. And they will make arrangements with folks. That was being, being paid for through donations from people in the community. So it's an opportunity maybe for some folks who might not have a, a nice Thanksgiving meal to get something for their families. So hopefully if people are watching or if they know of someone that might be in that need, that's an opportunity to do something nice for somebody for Thanksgiving. So just wanted to pass that on.
Also, there will be a couple other items for the regular select board meeting. Paper machine from the gravel pit, the storage at the Wyman Flynn and the TLR properties, all from the development department.
What was the first one? Paper machine?
Yeah.
Okay. You got those? All right. Quite a bit already. Review agenda items for our next joint board meeting. We have automated car trials and that'd be the time where we discuss Gary's position with the village?
That would be an item. That's one. The other one that we really haven't talked about much and it's something we need to think about is if we want to talk about the option to opt-in to allow for retail sales for marijuana. That's a new state initiative obviously passed the legislature. I can give you some more detail on how that process might work if we would at least want to have a conversation about it. Not saying we have to take a position. We're not saying we have to advocate.
So one was put in place years ago.
Yeah, reference dispensaries. You may want to reflect on that.
This is new now. This is different.
Yes.
Yeah. So just saying, if you wanted to have that conversation, we could start it, just get the information.
I'm interested in having that conversation.
Both groups take a look at it.
Yeah.
And then get some sense of where you want to go forward with it.
About a little bit of information on the housing proposal, what the village is working on. The only reason that we might want to have our nose in that is that they are, the health officer may be enforcing, doing some enforcement.
I guess that's part of the nuisance?
No, it's a, it's a housing ordinance that they've come out with and.
What's your?
And it just that, you know, if the health officer, the town will pay for his salary, not the village. If you've been enforcing on a village, we may want to have some discussion of that, how that, how that's going to be split.
Yeah, some of that was town-wide, right?
Yeah, they got, mention this slide board if you read the draft. It's up, it got brought out. So I'm just curious and see how that.
That's a lot. So I'll also write that then. Okay. Review and approve orders, bills and warrants.
Motion to approve the orders, bills and warrants. Seconded for discussion.
Motion been made and seconded to approve orders, bills and warrants.
Just, just a couple, Shannon, on page, on the 1111 one, page three or five, there's a QDCIP for 2708. It says highway wastewater pole light. Doesn't make any sense to me. Do you have anything about that one?
I'll have to look into that and get back to you unless Scott already knows.
Got broken.
He didn't know what it was.
Town highway wastewater pole?
No, it's a, yeah, yeah. Where was it?
I don't know, but I, I.
They, they're just curious, it keep my interest because it's wastewater, that's all. The other was, we paid Springfield paving $4,800 for sewer covers or was that for risers?
I will have to get back to you on those questions via email.
Okay, no problem. I'm just curious what it was for us. That's, I don't know why we were doing sewer covers. That's nothing to do with the town. Risers, if it was, risers, I can understand.
Any other?
When they did the paving on.
Question? Any more questions?
No.
Are you sure it's coded to the town?
That's where it is. That QDCP also has two invoices in the village. I mentioned it, Debbie, she missed it. Same, same company, two invoices, two, two amounts paid on the, with same check numbers. It just, it's like somebody might have put it in double. I, I don't know. Some, the village just didn't read mine.
We did have an issue with one of the homeowner's homes and it was decided through the interim manager, the, the town would pay for it and it was divided between the water, wastewater and highway. But I will get you a thorough answer via email tomorrow.
No problem. I just didn't understand the water, wastewater, pole light, that's all.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve orders, bills and warrants. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Other business? Susan?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Stefan?
No, sir, we're good.
I have a question about the current state with the north storefront here. We've seen some activity and I was under the impression we had signed a lease with the company and how that's all working out and who's paying what and who's paying utilities and if anyone had any information.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Our storefront, I see, has a pop-up Christmas shop where I was on the impression.
Gary's going to give an update.
We rented, we signed a lease. So how's that working out?
Yeah, so the tenants are paying regularly on the lease. They have not been late or missed payments. Due to COVID hitting, right when they were supposed to set up, they were focusing on their construction business and didn't get set up. And in order to have some activity in the downtown, especially during the holidays with the outdoor activities, they sub, well, the Christmas tree, the home Christmas tree shop that was in there last year approached the town and we worked with the tenants to have a sublet agreement.
Great, great answer. Thank you. And that's it from me, Peter?
No, not really. I can chat about that stuff and it's not, not a point.
Okay, thank you all very much. We don't need an executive session. But one more time, the free Thanksgiving was mentioned by the manager. Just got some information at Leslie's Tavern. There's a phone number, 802-463. I didn't write the rest down.
275 cell number.
275?
Yeah, 4093, I think, if I can.
What it's at Leslie's and it's that information and that's it from us.
During? Seconded.
Motion been made and seconded to adjourned. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Good night.